All right, this is the Tuesday, February 22nd, study session of the Prescott City Council. Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ruasing.
Yes.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moi Moore.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenny.
Here.
And I will note Councilwoman Hall's arrival time in the minutes.
All right, we'll start off with a discussion of Item A.
Presentation and discussion regarding Mullen Way infrastructure.
Good afternoon, Council. Mayor and Council, Craig Dotseth, Public Works. So this item that I bring before you today is to discuss Mullen Way history and the potential for a reimbursement district to construct water and sewer improvements into the area. So Mullen Way has a fairly long history. So back in annexation, happened in 2003. On this map that I have before you, the blue area is the initial annexation area that was considered and/or adopted through the ordinance. And then there was an amendment to that not too long afterwards that brought in the green area as well. So the green and the blue areas are now part of the city proper. And this happened in 2003. With that, when that was discussed, then there was discussions and with history of previous council members and that, knowing about or being part of that, they've brought up the potential that services were discussed as part of that annexation. Nothing that we have is specific as far as what the services was to include, but they did say that that was part of the discussion with the annexation. Next, in 2005, there was a potential assessment district and/or improvement district. To create an improvement district was considered. That improvement district at that time would have been significantly more involved than what it is today because of other improvements that we'll talk about in a little bit. So as part of this assessment district and improvement district, it would have had to include a new water tank, pump station, pipelines, everything, because the closest water was at Sheriff's Posse in Copper Basin Road, which is to the east of Mullen Way. And that, the cost associated with that was significant because of the amount of infrastructure that would have been included to accomplish it. So this ultimately is the item that was brought to council in 2006, considering to create that improvement district. And you can see there, at that time, it was considered over $2.7 million worth of improvements, which ultimately is a very large expense for the small area that Mullen Way ultimately encompasses. So that became very cost prohibitive in consideration of an improvement district, because at that time, it would have been assessed to all those properties. And if the improvement district would have went forward, then each of those properties would have been responsible for that. It would not be a potential to be, to elect to be included in it. It would have been mandatory, is the way the improvement districts used to work. Fast forwarding a little bit to 2012, so we as the City of Prescott and Public Works, water operations, did significant improvements to the entire Copper Basin corridor. So the work that was done-
Now Craig, I have a question here.
Yes, sir.
At the time this potential improvement district was considered, how many homeowners would have been involved in that $2.7 million cost?
I do not have that answer on the tip of my tongue, Mayor.
All right, please proceed.
In 2012, we as a city did significant improvements to the entire Copper Basin corridor. So improvements were done that have changed the whole Copper Basin area from Haas Empa Village Lane all the way to the western edge of the city limits. This exhibit here shows the area between Sheriff's Posse, would be on the upper right-hand corner of the exhibit there, going up Copper Basin Road, in Wickwood Lane, and then up in the circle down here in the bottom left is the new water tank that's constructed in there. So also with that, the 2005 improvement district, it would not have included improvements that would have been able to benefit the entire corridor either, like this project has done. We now have a million gallon tank up there that is providing the entire corridor, where there used to be several small tanks in that area. So this, this project here improved the entire area and then now has created the ability. Mullen Way is right here, coming off of Copper Basin. And there is a fire hydrant right there at Copper Basin Road and Mullen Way, which in our model is labeled at capable of over 3,000 gallons a minute. But there are no improvements or water system that go south on Mullen Way. So when it comes to improvements in the water system, when we do these large projects, then we are providing benefits to the entire area, providing improvements to many people and many properties with these larger projects versus there are other areas of our system that are, that were built under different standards than what we have today. And if we were to concentrate on those right away, they fix little pieces here and there versus these large projects add benefit to large areas and many people. And then when those projects are complete, then we can concentrate on smaller projects like Mullen Way that we're discussing today. So in the FY '22 budget, Public Works brought forward a project last year through the budget process to consider going forward with a reimbursement district potential for Mullen Way. What we were considering was for the city that we would go forward, design water and sewer improvements on Mullen Way, actually have those constructed, and then set up a reimbursement district for property owners that would be able to benefit from that. With that in mind, the design was started with a firm, and we're at 30% design now. We stalled that design because there are many of you that are new on this council that are not aware of the project and the concept consideration to do this type of project. So what I'm here today for is to give you a little bit of that history, consider what we were, you know, considering to do as far as creating the reimbursement district, and whether to, you would like us to continue to proceed on that path or not. With a reimbursement district, the properties that would be able to benefit from that would be identified as this design goes forward, and then would be included in a reimbursement district. That would be set up, then when, when the project was actually constructed, then that cost would be calculated out per those properties. And then when and if someone decided they wanted to connect on, then they would have to pay that fee, so then the city would, would get the monies back that it invested into those infrastructure improvements in this area. So that's where we're at today, is we're at a 30% design. So that has created or identified a potential alignment for the pipelines, for the water and sewer improvement or construction. And then as the project would continue, it would identify all the properties that would be able to be included in that reimbursement district. That would be then put into the district and would share the costs of that construction when it goes forward, if it goes forward. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have, and then I believe we have neighborhood representatives as well.
Well, we'll start by discussing it here with the council, and then we'll invite the Mullen Way representatives to come up and talk about their concerns. So Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Craig, how many, do we have an idea of how many homes are affected by Mullen Way right now, or would be potentially within this reimbursement district?
I don't have the exact number today, Councilman, because like I said, as they go forward with design and where they actually, how much is, is built, then we'd identify that. But we're in the range of dozen to 15 properties?
Okay, and then the next question I have for you is, you talked a little bit about there historically being an improvement district versus what we're dealing with now, which is the potential for a reimbursement district. Can you give me some understanding of the distinction between those two ideas?
And I'm going to ask Mark to help on that as well. Mark definitely has improvement district knowledge of what used to be able to be done, which has changed.
Thank you, Council, Councilman Montoya. A reimbursement district is basically, we build it, and then when people need to get into it, they pay us whatever the proportional share is. There's no loans, there's no bonds, it's just that they come up with the money when they need to get into it. An improvement district is, was, well, go with was, thanks to our state legislature. We would be able to construct infrastructure for a neighborhood, allocate it to the different properties along that neighborhood, issue bonds to finance it, and then the property owners could pay those, those debt payments out over 10 years or 15 years. Unfortunately, state law a few years ago was, was messed up, and it hasn't gotten straightened out yet, let's say, which basically precludes us from being able to do improvement districts, being able to secure those bonds like we used to. And that's a whole different discussion.
I appreciate that distinction. I guess my question is, do, and I know this is probably, since we're only 30% into the planning phase of this, this might be a hard question to answer, but is there an idea of what it would cost on, on a household level for people to tie into the system in terms of the reimbursement component of that?
The design has not moved that, that far yet to be able to have that information.
You mentioned a fire hydrant that was, you showed that fire hydrant at the beginning of Mullen Way. My question is, you said that it's got 3,000 gallons per minute pressure right now?
That would be 3,000 gallons a minute of flow capability.
Of flow, yeah. Is that, is that the only, how far back do those houses go from that fire hydrant, do we know?
Okay, right. It's hard to see my cursor. Down here in the very bottom left corner, see this orange tank?
Yes.
That's the new tank that was constructed. And then the purple dot, right, right there where my cursor's wiggling around. That's on the entrance to Mullen Way, and that is the hydrant that has that capability because of the project that we did on Copper Basin. All of that infrastructure in that upper end is new with that project. So then as you go south on Mullen Way, there, there is no water system, there are no fire hydrants down there at all.
Okay. And so that, I mean, so that's hundreds of feet, thousands of feet? Ballpark, you don't have to be, I'm not going to hold you.
It's about 1,000, 1,200 feet.
Okay. And then, when was the last time, I mean, it sounds like the improvement district, or the improvements that happened to Copper Basin corridor were relatively new. How confident are we, are we that there still exists that pressure in that fire hydrant currently?
We're 100% sure that it's there. And yes, those were new in 2012, one of the major deficiency water projects that, that we did in that area. Like I said, there used to be multiple little tanks. There was one on Tank Road, there was one in Timber Ridge, but the fire flows there. The system would be able to provide, say, 1,000 gallons a minute, but you're talking minutes that it would be able to go, like 20 or 30 minutes. Now with the pump station, pipeline tank that we've built there, we can provide that, that flow for hours from the water system.
If, if this project were to move forward, would there be, would there be the capacity to put in additional fire hydrants on that street, or?
That would be part of the design, yes.
Okay. I think that's all my questions, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ruasing.
Thank you. We built our house in 1988 in Los Peniles off of Copper Basin Road, and this year is the 20th anniversary of the Indian Fire. And I remember on my front deck watching shooting flames coming up over the ridge, behind Timber Ridge. And I believe that the reason why this area was annexed, it's actually more than Mullen Way, it's south of Copper Basin Road, all the way south to the Prescott National Forest border. And Prescott National Forest, they do have a fire line around the border there, but if there was a lightning strike or a house fire in this area, there is not one fire hydrant to fight, fight it. Everyone's on a well and septic. And during the summer, people are hauling water. None of these houses have sprinklers. This is a very vulnerable area, and I think that we need to protect the whole town by protecting this area from fire, because it's basically our first line of defense. And there is not one fire hydrant in that area. So I want to thank you for putting this on the study session, and I also want to thank the Mullen Way people for using the call to the public to bring this to our attention. So this is a way for us to get people off of septics, off of wells, get some fire hydrants out there. And also the reimbursement, reimbursement district is a very helpful and useful tool to pay for this infrastructure, and it's very commonly used. So thank you very much.
Councilman Tenny.
Couple of clarification questions. I think I may have had one of my questions answered by Councilman Ruasing just now. All these homes are up there right now, we don't have a city water line or sewer line, all wells and septics, is that correct?
And/or they haul water, that's correct.
Okay, okay. And it sounds like we don't have, we don't have the design all the way out, so we don't have a total cost on this. But it sounds like if there are 15 homes, maybe that could potentially hook up to this through reimbursement, that the individual cost could be substantial. Is that, is that a reasonable assumption?
There, there will be, it will, there would, it's going to cost some money, absolutely. We're talking water and sewer.
Right.
But it does not have to be anywhere near as bad as when it was considered to be an improvement district because of other improvements that have been completed-
Gotcha.
-and don't have to be included this time.
Good, okay. So if I were a homeowner in the area, and my primary concern was, as Councilman Ruasing brought up, having a fire hydrant nearer to my house, and we were to build it, is there a motivation beyond wanting to be on city water and sewer for all the, you know, the various benefits that come from that? Would there be a motivation for me to, to purchase into that reimbursement district? Or would I potentially think to myself, well, as long as they built the fire hydrant up there, I don't have to pay for that now? Is that, do you see where I'm going with that? I'm just curious, I don't, I don't know, I'm not suggesting anything.
I see where you're going. Septic systems aren't free to-
Sure, absolutely.
They have costs that go associated with them. And then when it comes to the, the water is also, as far as wells, they're fairly low producers up there. Quality is, is, it's definitely more brackish water, and perched aquifer as well can be limited, and that's why people have had to haul in the area as well.
Good, very good. So we're unlikely to be in a situation where we approve tens and maybe hundreds, low hundreds of thousands of dollars of improvements up there, and, and then we have property owners who determine, well, I got what I needed, I got a fire hydrant 150 feet from my house, I won't be participating in the, in the cost associated with having built this up here. Is that a likely or unlikely scenario? That may be a difficult question to answer.
I think it's likely for a while, because say that you're up there and, and you just did, you know, some work on your septic system within the last five years.
Right, there you go, okay.
And/or you put in a new pump and your well is serving you, but maybe down the road, a few years, when, when your well fails or your septic fails, then you look at, okay, do we put money into that, or do we hook on to the system? So, no, I would not expect instantaneous that everybody would, would connect on. But there's, as Mayor Protem mentioned, there's definite benefit to the city-
Sure, sure.
-as far as to add the protection-
And the citizens of our city, absolutely, yeah.
In that end of the city.
Gotcha, okay, good, good, thank you.
Councilman Sishka.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Craig, in fact, maybe this is from Mark. Mark, if they had this reimbursement district, and you say that it used to be where they could work out a situation where they, they paid off a bond in 10 years or whatever, would this be a lump sum payment, and they would have to figure out a way to finance it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how reimbursement districts work.
Okay, thanks, that's all I needed from you. And Craig, in the letters that I've looked at, people seem to think that what had started, and you said it's 30%, the, the design is 30% complete. Has the process been suspended?
We stalled it until I came here and talked with all of you again, being that we have so many new members that have no knowledge or, or experience of, of this situation. So yes, we stalled the design until we had this discussion.
Okay, so the stalling, though, how long has it been stalled?
About a month, maybe?
That's all?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, that's all I needed to ask you, thank you.
Mayor Protem, do you have another question?
I'm sorry.
Well, I'll say for myself that when the council decides to annex properties, I think there's an obligation that goes along with that annexation, that certainly public safety services should be extended to those annexed properties and areas. So not only will this particular project benefit the homeowners, but it would also benefit the surrounding homeowners and their concerns about wildfire protection. So I think even though it happened a long time ago, what originally, I think 93, and then that improvement district was proposed in 2005, I think there is a legitimate public safety expectation that every member of the city, any resident, has a right to feel that they have equal protection of the law. So I think this project needs to move forward, and if we can put together a reimbursement district to extend those services in a cost-effective manner, then I think it needs to, to be done. So at this point, do we have public comment?
We do, Mayor. My first card is from Mike McLean.
Mayor, Council, I don't know if I should add anything more to what's been discussed.
Mr. McLean, if you could speak into the microphone, please.
Sorry. I don't think I should, I don't have a lot to add to what was discussed. If you remember, I was here a month ago promoting this same project. I know Michael's familiar, I've been talking to Eric Bay for about a year and a half. I'm a new build in that area, and I don't have any well, I don't have any water, no fire protection. I'm probably 1,500 yards or so from that fire hydrant. So just on behalf of the residents, yeah, please move forward with this thing. I'm working with the council now, or I should, I should say the city, for a permit for, for my home. And so I'm kind of in a stall, what am I going to do? Can I run water to where these potential hookups will be? I think there's been some letters, and I think you guys referred to a few of them from other residents, that are also hoping that this goes forward. So anything other than that, yeah, thank you for your comments, Mayor. Thank you, Craig. I hate to see, he's my new best friend, he's leaving, I don't like that. But anyway, if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them, but thank you, yeah.
I have a question. I would just like to remind everyone to firewise your properties to help us out with the upcoming fire season. And I think you can talk to the city about, maybe there's some grants and programs if you don't want to pay out of, out of your pocket. But it's very important that we firewise that area, because like I said, it's our first line of defense. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And just for our design, we will have sprinklers in, in our home, and so they're not very good if you don't have any water to put the sprinkler. So thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, Yvonne Dorman.
Mayor and Council, I just, and Craig, I just want to say thank you for considering this again. I hope it goes through, not just for my neighborhood, for the city. A fire coming through there would be, it would be bad. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Yvonne.
That's all, Mayor.
Anything else? Did you have another comment, Mayor Protem?
I would just like to thank Public Works and the Mullen Way people for getting this on our study session and helping to move this project forward in a timely manner.
And Mayor, if I could, to Mayor Protem's comment about firewise, April is going to be our free brush month this year to help with situations like that. And in the past, we've had it in June, but so many times we end up with June being when you can't run a chainsaw.
Right.
Yes.
It doesn't go together very well. So April is a free brush month this year to, to help on that front.
Thank you.
I think that's a better way of scheduling things, for sure. So where do we want to go at this point?
Mayor and Council, I think staff has clear direction, and I don't think anybody is saying, hold up the design anymore, we'll proceed with the design and move forward.
Agreed. All right, well then we'll move on to Item B in the discussion, naming a Prescott Centennial Center.
Thank you, Mayor. As indicated in the council memo, in October of 2021, council adopted Resolution Number 2021-1798, which established the city council policy for naming of city facilities. At that time, council had received a couple of different presentations from staff with regard to naming of city facilities, and there was no policy in place as of yet. Since the adoption of that policy, staff has received 28 applications, which were forwarded to the mayor, and staff was directed to place the item on today's study session for discussion. I'm going to just kind of briefly cover the specifics of the policy and staff's process outside of that. So the policy states, "The city council shall review and evaluate all requests for the naming or renaming of any buildings, facilities, trails, or any other property owned by the city. City buildings, facilities, trails, and other property owned by the city should not ordinarily be named after an individual except by the criteria below. The individual must be from Prescott or the Prescott area and should have accomplished something that was significant or extraordinary in nature. The name should engender a positive image that is not controversial in the community. The individual may be living or deceased. If living, permission for naming and specifically which facility is being named must be received from the individual. If deceased, permission must be received from a close surviving family member if there is one. The naming must be accompanied by a public comment period of 30 days following a city council study session before consideration during a voting meeting. At the voting meeting, a summary of the public comments shall, or the comments received shall be shared with the city council and the public." And then the following is a procedure to consider naming a city building, facility, trail, or any other property owned by the city. And this is in keeping with the council rules of procedures. The mayor, two council members, or a member of the public may request that a name be considered. The mayor or two council members may place an item on the study session agenda for consideration. The request shall include the name of the individual, significant or extraordinary accomplishment or contribution, and what building, facility, trail, or other property owned by the city is requested for naming, as well as written permission from the individual or a close surviving family member. This should be done in writing and sent to the city clerk accomplishment or contribution, and what building, facility, trail, or other property owned by the city is requested for naming, as well as written permission from the individual or a close surviving family member. This should be done in writing and sent to the city clerk to be properly placed on the agenda. So after that policy was adopted in October, my office put together an application form, which is posted on the city website. As I mentioned, since that time, the city of Prescott has received 28 applications at time of publication of the study session agenda today to name the Centennial Center after Major Frank Shale Jr. Since publication of the agenda, the city clerk's office has received nine applications, which were forwarded to the mayor earlier today for naming of the Centennial Center after Mr. Marlon Kukendall? I hope I pronounced that correctly. Thank you. And we did advise the applicants for those because they did not include permission from a family member. We did receive that later this afternoon as well. At this time, council simply wished to present the, or I'm sorry, staff wished to present the applications, which were included in the study packet, to council for consideration. We will post them on the city website in accordance with the policy for the next 30 days and allow public comment, and the item will be brought forward to council at the March 22 voting meeting for consideration of naming the building as council sees fit.
Thank you, city clerk. It's my understanding that this would be the very first application under this new policy that was established back in 2019, is that correct?
It is, Mayor, yes.
So I do want to emphasize the fact that this is a policy that was established by a previous council, and policies can be amended, altered, et cetera, by future councils. There's no obligation that previous council policies have to be continued. So that's just as a little FYI. Councilman Shishka.
(laughter)
Thank you for turning off your light. So I know that there's been a substantial effort from Elizabeth Borgo and the fellow members of the city that have supported this, so I think at this point, we'll probably ask for their group to come forward and present their justification for this application. But before we do, Mayor Protam, you had a comment?
Thank you. I would just like to emphasize that having an official naming policy was way overdue, and it was something that was motivated by the public. The community felt that we needed to maybe have an official policy with some guidelines and rules so that we wouldn't have all of our public buildings named after politicians and ourselves. Thank you.
Betty, do you want to come up and present your proposal to the council, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council members. I'm Elizabeth Begalt, I'm a researcher and historian here in Prescott. I have been working for four years now to get Major Frank Shale recognized and honored and memorialized here in the city of Prescott. I appreciate having this opportunity today to demonstrate my strong support in renaming the Prescott Centennial Center after Major Frank Shale. Frank is Prescott's legendary World War II aviator, not just local, but country and worldwide. The past is a tricky thing, it just doesn't show up on our doorsteps. We have to look for it, and when we find it, we have a very important decision to make. Are we going to be the ones to keep it alive, or are we going to be the ones that let it fade into history? Frank, let me see, I lost my spot already. The past has definitely let Major Frank Shale down by letting him fade into history. According to an article in the Arizona Republic, published on April 4, 1943, the headline reads, "Prescott's Flyers Name Seen High on Arizona Hero List." The article goes on to state, "When the curtain is rung down on this world's greatest conflict, the name of Major Frank Shale Jr. will be near the top of Arizona's roll of war heroes." Colonel L. Scott, who wrote the book Damn to Glory in 1944, dedicated the 15th chapter to Major Shale. He wrote about a piston, and a piston is somebody that does great things but becomes an unmentioned piston. He states, "I have seen many unmentioned pistons, but to me, the most heroic of them all was Major Frank Shale." Major Shale was a member of the American volunteer group, known as the Flying Tigers, the China Task Force, and the 14th Air Force. He became an ace destroying seven Japanese planes while in the AVG. Frank was recognized by General Chennault as one of the finest pilots and navigators. He stated that Frank had seen more of Asia than any other flyer of that AVG. He was a reconnaissance specialist completing over 2,000-plus award-winning missions. Sadly, Frank was killed on his last mission on December 7, 1942, on the first anniversary of Pearl Harbor. He sacrificed his life for democracy, freedom, and justice. He was a highly decorated veteran, the recipient of the Silver Star for invading enemy fighters and getting photographs of Hanoi on September 13, 1942. These photographs enabled bombers to stage one of the most effective raids in the entire China theater. Two distinguished American flying crosses for gallantry in action. Frank was one of only eight members of the AVG to receive the British Distinguished Flying Cross, which was awarded by Lord Halifax, British Ambassador to the United States, on behalf of King George VI. He received two of China's highest military decorations, the Cloud and Banner and the Wing Star Medal. Camp Shale, a magnificent rest camp for soldiers in China, was built in memory of our Frank Shale. Both China and the United Kingdom have honored Major Shale, and we need to ask ourselves, what have we done here? It is time for all of us to stand up to the plate to finally honor our World War II legendary aviator, Frank Shale, Frank Shale Jr., by naming the Centennial Center after him. Thank you for your consideration.
Betty, I have one question. Once again, how old was Major Shale when he was doing all these wonderful things?
Well, he died in 1942 at 25.
25.
And he left in 1941 to travel from California all the way out to China.
Oh, thank you. 25, wow.
Yes, and I think he's accomplished more in his 25 years than any one of us could ever think of doing it.
Indeed. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Montoya.
Betty, I just wanted to say, you were so gracious to ask me to come into your home and see all the work you put together during the campaign, and I was just, I was blown away. I think your point about this being, that history sometimes forgets these folks, it's a shame because this is quite an accomplished gentleman, so thank you for highlighting his work.
And thank you for coming to my home. I appreciated it.
Well, thank you very much, Betty, for your presentation. I think based upon the policy that was established, Major Shale certainly qualifies under all the criteria expected. So do we have any other additional public comment?
We do, Mayor. Kathleen Howchen?
Howchen. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I really appreciate this opportunity to offer my support in renaming the Centennial Center to honor Major Frank Shale Jr. I'll try not to duplicate a lot of the information, but I am a member of the Yavapai Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution, and I've been a resident in the area since 1972. And having been peripherally involved in the aviation community for about 20 of those years, I had never heard of Major Shale until his history was brought to light as a result of Mrs. Borgo's extensive research. And I thought, how can this be? Prescott has always been a city and a region that recognizes and shows pride in our hometown heroes, veterans, and other notable citizens. So why is it that Major Shale's name is so unfamiliar with local residents? Frank Shale was a small-town boy who left Prescott to enter the Army Air Force and was one of the first to volunteer for Brigadier General C.L. Chennault's American Volunteer Group in China. Major Frank Shale Jr. was a highly decorated aviator and gave his life in service to our country. I can't think of a better tribute to one of Prescott's own than to have the Centennial Center always so closely identified with Ernest A. Love Field renamed in honor of Major Frank Shale Jr., a man whose life was lived and lost in aviation. How fitting to have his memory and service to country honored at a place where one can hear the roar of aircraft engines in the background and near where so many of our future aviators are trained. And if I may, I would like to acknowledge other Yavapai Chapter Daughters here today that stand in support of this action. We have Debbie Lamb, our Regent, Martha Ferrera, Linda Shebeck, her husband John is in the back, Mary Kelly, of course Betty, Beverly Stewart Barak, Debbie Alshouse, Sandy Shanahan, and Sue Burke. I laugh because I typically rename people on the fly, so, anyway, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howchen. Anyone else?
That's all, Mayor.
I think at this point, I know one of the concerns that I had was the Centennial Center historically was part of the Anlo Pils Golf Course snack shack. Anybody who plays golf will usually know that after nine holes, there's what they call the turn, and there's a place usually to get a hot dog or a beverage or something like that. And I know that the Centennial Center at the time fit that category, but eventually there was a decision no longer to have that building continue, and I think there was a proposal to actually demolish it. So that was changed, and now we have that really effective and highly valuable meeting facility out there. It would be nice if there were maybe a building or something that could be more directly related to the airport for Major Shale's connection with it, but we're dealing with the proposal that we have in front of us today. So I think at this point, we would move forward with moving it into the 30-day timeframe. We have a comment here from Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just raising some questions since it is a study session, and I'm trying to gain a greater understanding of the process, and I appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much, it was excellent. I guess I'd like to know, how did the Centennial Center get to be called the Centennial Center to begin with? How was that name chosen? Why was it chosen? Are we stepping on somebody's toes by renaming a building that's already been named by the city? Because that's happening all across this country.
Right.
We see that in our country right now, so I want to be cautious that we just don't go rename a building, that there was a reason why we named it that to begin with. Secondly, we just found out today, and it wasn't in our packets, that there's been another proposal for another name for the same building, and so I know we've only heard from this contingency, are we going to hear from the other contingency? Is this going to be a fair and public process? Are we only going to entertain this naming proposal? So I'm just raising questions. I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, I'm just trying to be fair because we're representing the public here, and this is a study session, so these are questions I'd like to ask.
Right, I think all those are legitimate concerns. You know, creating a policy here, I think, was a pretty good idea because none existed prior to the creation of this policy, a little over two years ago, or a little less than two years ago, I think. So now we actually have a competing group, competing for the naming of the same building.
Right.
And even though it's a, certainly, Major Shale is a non-controversial hero in my mind, and certainly more than eligible for some elevated recognition, simply because he lost his life at maybe a, how can you say, a bad time during the war when some other issues were maybe of more public awareness at the time, to allow his great sacrifice and phenomenal heroic war record to go unrecognized and to be maybe lost in the recognition of time, I think is a tragedy. But we want to make sure that as we, if we do adopt this policy and move forward, we don't create an additional controversy with competing groups.
Right.
And I think that's probably why having at least a 30-day timeframe for additional public discussion to be brought forward before we make a decision on whether we adopt this or modify it to some extent. So I don't think that we have the other group on this.
No, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Excuse me, the applications were not left out of the packet, they weren't received until after the packet was posted and published.
I understood that.
Okay. So we didn't start receiving the applications for the other individual until after the agenda packet went out, which is why they were not part of the packet. I also want to clarify that we're not addressing the policy specifically, we're, council is taking into consideration the applications that were received up to the time of the publication of the agenda for naming of a facility in accordance with the established policy after Major Frank Shale Jr.
Right.
If at the March 22 council meeting, staff's recommendation to name the building in accordance with the applications that have been received is not the desire of council, council can at that time amend the policy, they cannot name the building after anybody, they can name it after somebody else based on anything that comes in during the next 30 days in the public comment. That's council's discretion.
So the competing group will be looked at as a completely separate application within this policy?
Yes, so we forwarded the applications in the same manner that we did all of the ones that we received for Major Frank Shale, and we can either put that on another study session, if that's the desire of Mayor and/or two members of council, or those can be included in council's consideration at the March 22 meeting.
Yeah, so we have the potential for overlapping applications for the same building.
Correct.
Which makes it even a little more complicated.
Yes, and I just don't know if that was taken into account when the policy was created, and how those situations would be handled, because I wasn't a part of this council when that policy was created and adopted.
That falls into the category of unintended consequences.
So I'm just playing the devil's advocate here, I have no opposition to this organization's proposal, it's just I think we need to think this through. We're renaming a building that's already been named, why was it named the building the way it was? Is there some history that maybe we need to do some research and look into that? That's all I'm saying. I just want to make sure that we're going about this the right way.
I think that's a good question, and probably does need to be included in consideration.
Maybe like us going back and say, let's change the name of the Gray Sparks Activity Center, or Ken Lindley Field, or AC William Granite Creek Park. I mean, we have so many named facilities, and if we just start renaming facilities, we might run into a buzzsaw here.
Certainly valid comments.
I have a comment.
Mayor Protam, Rossing.
I think that in all fairness, if there's other applicants, maybe at our next council meeting, we should have a study session and hear them too, and allow them to speak before we decide if they feel like it, or if they want to continue.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, after hearing of Frank Shale, I would definitely like to see him be recognized somewhere in the city of Prescott, whether it's here or whether it's somewhere at the airport. You don't have people like this very often in a lifetime.
Indeed.
Yep. So he truly deserves to be recognized, and thank you for bringing out the past. On the other hand, one of my concerns about this whole situation was taking somebody's reputation and running it through the mill. And is it worth it to expose someone to not only, you know, adulation, but also the other side of that? And so, you know, I've really had a problem with the naming of buildings with this kind of policy, because ultimately, and it says, you know, that they can't be controversial. Well, controversial is in the eye of the beholder. And I would hate to see someone who is loved by a lot of people, but not loved by some people, all of a sudden- but not loved by some people, all of a sudden have those folks come out and dredge up old history, so to speak. So I don't see anything. Frank Schill probably didn't live long enough to have that kind of controversy. But there are other folks who may be eligible who probably do. And so it's a slippery slope. I just hope that we're very, very careful in our deliberations.
I could probably think there are a few Japanese pilots that weren't too happy with him.
You're probably right. But they're not around anymore.
So I think, let's see, what else here? Mayor Protam Rusi, another comment?
Yeah. And I would just like to remind the public that there's many other ways that we can honor people in this community. For example, the colleges have endowments and scholarships, and you can fund a student in a certain area, field of interest, and/or a plaque. I mean, you don't have to have a building named. We have many other ways to honor people in our community.
Well, thank you very much. If you don't have any other comment, no more public comment?
No, Mayor.
Then I think, again, we'll move it into the 30-day comment period. Thank you very much. That concludes this section of our study session. I thank you all, ladies, for coming in and participating. So we'll move to item C.
Midyear budget report for fiscal year 2022.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor, council, this is a very exciting day. I know you're as excited as I am to talk about budget. This is our annual mid-year budget. It's kind of done at the beginning of the budget season to kind of look at where we are. This, of course, is supplemental to all the budget reviews we do throughout the year. And even every other month in the council packet, we send you a little budget report on everything. So this is more of a public area of that. And then just kind of a quick look at some things we see coming down the road in the next few months as we work through the budget process. So with that, we will get started. In this, I have more detail. This is similar to the report I also sent council monthly on sales tax activity. This is through December, only in a little more detail. As you can see, the economy is locally, and taxable activity has been doing great. I mean, in 2021, we saw a 12.36% increase in the first six months. First six months of this year, we're seeing a 6.31. It's all real good. Why is that? I mean, we've had a lot of money pumped into the economy by the federal government. That's part of it. We've had some inflation out there. That's another part of it. As we try to do our projection for 2023, we kind of look at those things and try to determine, you know, this isn't really a sustainable growth rate. This isn't going to continue. Inflation is obviously going to continue for a while as the Federal Reserve tries to reduce that. But the discretionary income, if you will, in the population as a whole is probably going to peter out here as we move forward. So as we project for next year, we're obviously not going to project another 6% or 5% growth year. We're going to, you know, it could even be leveled to down a little. So we look at our individual categories, of course. Retail is our biggest category. It's, again, we show percentages here, but you got to look beyond percentages. It's only up 9%, but that is almost $60 million more this year over the last, for six months of last year. Construction is significantly down. If we look at that, we do see a reduction in permits and those type of things. We also, we know it's because of supply chain issues. People aren't able to build. Also, mortgage rates are going to be going up. So we're going to continue to see some down in construction. Construction, typically, if we would put this out for 10 years, you always have negative years. 32%, 33% is more significant than that, though. So we have been and will continue to review our taxpayers in that area, and we are following up with our auditors to do that, to make sure that everybody is reporting as required.
What components of construction generate those numbers?
It's construction activity, mostly residential, but also commercial.
So is it permitting or purchase of construction-related supplies?
It is construction, building. Not the buying of building supplies, but as people buy houses or pay contractors to build a house. That is a construction activity. So it's tied to that timeframe. And again, we are reviewing it. We think we may find some issues, but we will resolve those issues as we always do in tax audits.
Councilman Hall, you got a question?
The construction falls under that 60. So what happens is, my understanding, and I think it's for the city of Prescott.
Oh, there we go. It's the 65% rule, right? So whatever someone's charging a customer to build, then it's 65% of that that they pay, the sales tax number on.
Right. Of construction deductions, there is a 35% deduction for the labor side of it. Also, building impact fees are deducted. In Prescott, cost of the land is deducted. So there are various deductions. But it is that activity, the building of a house, the buying of a new house, not the buying of old houses, not old houses, but previously built houses.
Not new construction.
Yeah, not new construction. Utilities are mostly level, as they usually are. There was some fluctuation last year. Obviously, you could pin it on the pandemic, more people home, more power being consumed. The other activities are all up in a lot of areas, especially when we look at restaurants and bars, which is what you would expect. It was down last year, so the up this year is even up above the 2020 numbers. The online retail is a new category, which separated some activity that was online retails, relates to the Wayfair ruling. It's not all related to that. The Wayfair ruling happened, ADOR, Arizona Department of Revenue, separated out, excuse me, separated out, running retail sales, and several items that were previously reported in just general retail were moved to that category. But it also does have the additional taxpayers who weren't reporting before being reported in it. What percentage is new, what percentage is old, is really hard to come to because Amazon reported both ways. They're reporting more now. Is that just because activity was up, or is it because of various other things? We've looked at it, the legal's looked at it. If I had to guess, I'd say probably 60% of that was reported before, but 40% of it's new. And again, it's seen an increase of almost $10 million in activity from '21 to '22. Hotels are up. We'll see more of that on the next slide. Advertising is one of those areas that is constantly trending down as people change the way they advertise. It just is falling out of the taxable category. It's not a huge category to begin with. And use tax varies on vehicles purchased out of state. And right now, people are purchasing vehicles wherever they can find vehicles, I think, in-state, not-of-state. But 6.3 altogether, 60-some a million more in activity for the first six months as compared. Bed tax is incredible. Obviously, we have more occupancy. We have higher room rates on average, but we also have more beds in our town. As you can see, we're at $817,000 collected this six months to date, which is, you know, almost as much, you know, it's only $100,000 less than it was in 2020 altogether. So this year is going to definitely be higher. And we would expect that to continue. Obviously, we have new rooms, and that inflation kind of hits those industries a little faster than any others. Looking at the general fund, next few slides look mainly at the general fund. This one is the city as a whole budget, and then we'll go into the general fund. General fund makes up 46% of what we do. The general fund is our general fund. It's where the council has the most discretion. We pay public safety, parks, library, and the general governmental function there. Restricted revenues are like the streets taxed, the health funds, the trusts that people give us, the grants, those type of things. They represent 17% of our total budget. And our enterprise activity, the water, the wastewater, the golf course, the airport, all those represent 37% of the operating budget. Feel free to ask questions if you have any as we go through this.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Between the general fund and the enterprise fund, funds that are collected at the golf course, how are those budgeted? Like, because you have Parks and Rec that's over the golf course, but we're collecting funds through the enterprise fund. So are these funds being reinvested into the golf course? Because I've heard concerns about the maintenance and upkeep of the golf course and the budget, and I just don't understand the process.
So the golf course operation itself is part of the Parks and Rec department. Obviously, there's a lot of things in Parks and Rec. Golf is its own separate thing. All the revenues and expenses in the golf course are accounted for through an enterprise fund, basically a business component, where all the cash and all the payments are made out of that. So no funds collected at the airport, I'm sorry, at the golf course are used for anything, or the airport for that matter, are used for anything but that function. They are not used for softball leagues or any of that other thing.
The reason I ask is because I've had residents complain to me that the city is using the funds that the golf course is collecting to fund city projects. And it's the mayor and city council's fault that the golf course isn't being maintained and taken care of.
Yeah. That's absolutely incorrect. In fact, the general fund subsidizes the golf course each year to bring that maintenance level up.
It might be helpful to have some kind of a public, like one of your video chats or something, to discuss that so that this information gets out to the public.
We'll certainly be discussing that as we go into our budget cycle. And that's a separate line item of concern. And yeah, I think it's, there's some legitimate concerns there. Councilman Montoya.
Mark, how much are we subsidizing the golf course on an annual basis? Just if you had, I mean, not that you have to be accurate to the penny, but if you had to guess. I've seen in previous budgets, it looks like as much as $0.5 million a year. Is that correct?
Operationally, it's a couple hundred thousand, as I recall. But any capital that's needed, we have some irrigation issues that are happening. Those fully come out of the general fund. So, because there's just no revenue in the golf course.
Right. So a certain degree, it sounds like the golf course is actually losing money.
Oh, absolutely. No doubt.
Right.
Most golf courses in the country are losing money.
Yeah, fair enough. I guess my question is, on those other enterprise items, is there subsidy that's happening with those other enterprise items to Councilman Moore's point?
Oh, yes. We subsidize the airport as well, operationally when needed at the airport. But all the capital and the city share of the grants that happen at the airport come from the general fund.
Right. They don't come from the... Matching components. Even if we get 95% from the FAA, we still have to come up with a 5.
Right. And that's been coming from the general fund, which, of course, reduces funds available for public safety and other things.
And then, can you talk to wastewater or salt waste in terms of...
They aren't subsidized.
They aren't subsidized. So the user fees basically pay for those things?
Yes. And again, we go through those rate-setting processes on a regular basis to make sure that happens. Airport and golf course is a little trickier because golf is a rough industry right now, and...
Good pun.
Yeah. We're doing more.
Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. A couple things. You know, if you'd quit making such large divots, the course would be in better shape.
I beg your pardon. I do have a excavation permit.
And we both play on the beach a lot, too. You know, Mark, one of the things about the golf course and the enterprise fund is that if you look at it from the economic success that the golf course and the airport bring to Prescott, I think that that's one of those things that we can't focus on in this kind of situation. But if we look at the economic development that's been afforded by the golf course and the airport, it far outweighs anything that the general fund may contribute to the success of the golf course.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protam Rusi.
Thank you. Well, I support the golf course 100%. I think it's one of those amenities that a municipality should offer to the community. But maybe we should look at raising the fees. What do you think?
That would be very popular.
And we look at that regularly with our Billy Casper Golf, our partner out there, and adjust them as needed. But again, it's a difficult industry, and raising fees generally doesn't always produce more revenues. It reduces play.
Thank you.
Kind of like the Laffer Curve.
Right. Moving on, looking at the general fund specifically, just to clarify where we spend the money that council has some discretion over. The rest of it is kind of specified by law. 74%, 75% of it is public safety, with police being 37% and fire being 27%. We separate out the unfunded liability, because as you know, we're paying that down. Eventually, that will go away. And the 22 budget, that's 9.5%. You can see the other components, rec services, that's the lakes, that's the parks, that's the open space maintenance, that's all those other things happen through there. Library, of course, is the library. General government is made up of the council, manager, legal, city clerk, court, your extraordinary budget and finance department, as well as the road, parking garage.
Councilman Montoya.
Mark, that 9.5%, do you have an idea of what that dollar amount? Like, I know we've seen that in the PSPRS report before, but can you give us, is there like, is it $11 million that we're paying?
We'll have that on an upcoming slide.
Okay. Thank you.
I can't remember it specifically, but I know it's on the slide coming up. The funding, where does the money come from? And these are important as we look at local taxes. That sales tax is critical, obviously. It's almost 50% of our revenues. That's sales tax and franchise taxes. Our property taxes add another 4%. You know, not huge, but it's important. Inner governmental revenues, which we're going to talk about, the state's constant attack on those a little later, is 34% of our budget. Charges for services is 10%. And license, permit, fines, and forfeitures, and so, and all those make up the rest of them. Just wanted to give everybody a sense of where the money comes from that we have, excuse me, and that's what we have for provide public safety and those fees. They're not really tied to how much police protection you need or any of that. So that's the issue, is you got to decide how to spend this pot of money. There's only so much of it. If you spend it on golf course subsidies, you can't spend it on new police officers or whatever. And that's the balancing act that we do as we go through the budget process.
Mayor, just... Hold on a second, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Just want to reiterate on that sales taxes situation. A few years ago, when we were looking at the PSPRS 0.35 or 0.75 tax, we looked at who was contributing to our sales taxes. And 46% were citizens of Prescott. 16% were locals who were not living in the city. And another 38% were actually people coming in from outside of our area, so the tourists. So Prescott people actually only pay Prescott citizens about 40% of that bill.
Absolutely true, Councilman. As we've mentioned, Prescott is still the retail center of Yavapai County. I mean, obviously, an increased competition each year as Prescott Valley and Chino Valley and all those grow and have more retail options. As road realignments change, it's going to change where people drive. And if you change where people drive, you're going to change where people shop, something to keep in mind as we look at new roads. But yes, the citizens of Prescott have greatly benefited by that retail synergy we have here.
Mayor Protam Rusi.
Thank you. Mark, you obviously know our sales tax, 9.1%. And are we still sending 5.6% of that to the state, or has that increased?
I believe the state is still at their 5.6. Yeah. Those have continued. Of course, everything goes to the state. They just send us back our share.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
General fund summary, we've talked a little bit about this. Just wanted to be clear, looking at the 22 budget, we have our operating revenues, our operating expenses, the capital, and the capital transfers to the other funds. And then we had a contingency, and that contingency was used, you know, above and beyond for a land purchase council did in July. That puts a total uses of fund balance at $18 million. Our available unassigned fund balance was $16 million. So obviously, our unassigned fund balance was in a deficit by July, budgetarily. So the 1.8 that we're in the deficit, we have frozen those capital projects, and we'll reevaluate them with the new budget cycle. Just wanted to bring that up. As we go into the cycle, we need to be aware there is not a large pool of available fund balance for whatever council might want. Looking at the budget as a whole, our operating budget is $99 million. We're at 43, like, these are expenditures, $43 million, $5... We're at 43, like, these are expenditures, 43,581,923, 44% spent in the middle of the year, which is of course 50. There is some accrual in there that could be there to make that a little higher, but for mid-year budget report, we don't do a full accruing. The PSPRS, the 0.75 tax is coming in well above, which makes that expense higher. This is that additional tax, Councilman Montoya, is $3,135 of the unfunded liability that's, that was in the general fund and that plaid colored wedge. We had a debt issue that we have in here as a contingency. If something comes up, council needs to issue this year. Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
So you're saying, am I reading the, am I reading it wrong? It looks like it's closer to 14.7 for the three-quarter percent or is that?
Yeah.
It looks like it's the unfunded ARC is the $3 million payment, is that correct?
Right, that was your question, was the wedge and the pie chart, how much was that?
Is, is what the wedge was of the PSPRS tax?
No, the PSPRS tax is $14,780.
I think maybe, I guess when I was looking at that wedge, I thought it was the unfunded liability, but that's just the ARC payment?
That's the unfunded ARC payment, not the additional tax.
Got it, okay, that, that's.
Additional tax is not in the general fund, it's a restricted fund.
Restricted item, okay, that's what I, that's what I thought, that's why I was a little bit confused.
Okay.
Thank you.
Clear?
Yes.
All right, and we have a debt issue that was budgeted this year in case council comes up with something that we need to issue debt on. And then that general fund contingency, which of course was spent in July. We have grant contingency that hasn't been allocated yet, as well as capital and capital projects are always slow at coming around, so that's only 15.2%. Looking individually at operating budgets by department, all the departments are doing relatively well. The general governmental is low, primarily due to some bigger contracts, like the, some of the studies we're doing and those type of things are slower to develop. Those are operating items, but they act, act more like capital. Airport is right at 48, which is about, you know, where you'd be at 50% of the year. Community development is at 35. Some of that relates to the CDBG grants, which are in community development that are spent at various times throughout the year. They're not, again, capital, they're more of an operating thing, as well as some other deferred payments that they have going. Police, fire, public works, all the rest of them are right in the 40s, right where you'd want them to be. Non-departmental is right at 50. As we get into the non-operating budgets, airport capital, those are the slower projects to come online. Council will award a contract, but it takes a while for the construction to happen and that's when it gets recognized here. Public works again, 22.8. Other capital is a variety of things. You know, different grants and other things are out there for the Center for the Future, other projects as well. There's a list of them, which we look at through the budget process. The debt issue again, and the other contingencies that we've already looked at. Overall, operating budgets at 45% spent, which is about where we'd like to see it, and total expenditures at 32.7. Looking at the revenue side, more good news. I mean, obviously, taxes are coming in relatively strong. Again, we think that's not momentary, but I don't think that's a continued trend. I think the, the surplus in the spending in the economy will play out. I think inflation hopefully will be brought back into control, but they're coming in good now. And 57.3%, you can see all of our taxes are there. Bed tax, like we said, is 93% with six months spent, doing better than anybody forecast. The rest of the revenues are right in, in that range. Intergovernmental, again, 34% of the general fund is coming in good because part of that is related to sales tax. Fines and forfeitures are the lowest there, 42. And again, that's, that's primary what we see in fines and forfeitures with the change and the way that's being done over the last few years, looking more at corrective actions as opposed to just over fining violators. It'll go down, we got to obviously get something in there, 632% in other revenues. That deals with a couple land sales that we did to the Humane Society, as well as a portion of the W parcel. Those are revenues when we sell them. Again, this is governmental accounting, where you get to recognize capital items as revenues and expense. Grants are at 13%. Again, we do a lot of grant contingencies because you can't spend it if you don't do it. The debt proceeds is that 10 million contingency, but it's also two whiff of loans that we are drawing on as those projects go. Overall, though, revenues are very strong. As we look into this year and look at going into next year, which are good and will help as we look at addressing some of that shortfall in the general fund fund balance as we get into 2023. Councilman Shishka, you look like you have a question.
Let's go to the PSPRS.
Yes, sir.
Received as of 12, 2021, was 88,500,000. So basically, that's 17 million. And what was our, our total unfunded as of this last reporting period?
Next slide.
About 22 million?
Next slide.
Next slide.
Good question. Let me address that with the next slide.
I'm glad you asked that, Councilman Shishka.
So we have, yes, we've obviously take, done great job with our PSPRS. We've gone from 30% funded up to 84. Again, that is important to provide for our public safety personnel, the pensions that we promised them, to get that funded. So 22, 347, and you're absolutely right, we're getting close. Like we talked about, we're going to need to look at, at when do we stop this tax? There's a timing issues on how you do that. Obviously, DOR needs 90 days to stop the tax. I'm not going to know where we are June of this year until next December, so we're going to have to make some estimates. And I am working with PRS, PRS to do that. And right now, if I had to pick, it's going to be sometime in the fall of this year to line up with DOR timeframes. I'm not sure, we'll address that more as we get into the budget workshops. But the issue is it was 22,347 as of June 30 of last year. That is our present value numbers. So any receipts and payments we have to make, we have to discount. So that brings it down. So that makes the calculation a little more difficult, but it should be in the fall of the year, if not by Christmas.
Mayor. There would be a nice Christmas present for the taxpayers, wouldn't it?
Again, that'll be five years early, and that's because of the commitment to continue to make payments out of the general fund as well as the other monies we spent. That's why we're able to shave those years off of that cycle. And, and the economic, level of economic activity in town has helped.
Councilman Montoya.
Mark, if I could just clarify, so are you saying that we would notify Arizona Department of Revenue that we could suspend it in fall? Like that would be when that tax would fall off in fall or that fall would start that 90-day period? I just.
Again, we'll be looking specifically. It would probably be, if I, if you put a gun to my head right now, I would say December 31st of this year would be the best time to make that tax go away. So January 1, we would be back to just 2%.
Got it, okay, I appreciate that clarification.
A lot of more information I'm trying to get from PSPRS to make that projection. And like I've said before, when we said this, the only thing I can guarantee is we're not going to hit 1.5 exactly.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate that clarification.
Mark, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Back on PSPRS, you know, Councilman Montoya, you know, was asking about the unfunded ARC and the 9.5%. And I remember back five years ago, we were talking about if we didn't do anything, our unfunded ARC instead of nine and a half percent would be over 70% of our general fund.
Yes, we were headed for trouble. And again, that's because of the level of, you know, the, where our funding level was based on, you know, and I could go on for hours.
Yeah, it's an if, come situation, yeah, I understand. But there, that's quite a difference, it's amazing.
It has saved municipal services here in the city. It's enabled you to contribute to the golf course and to the airport and to do capital projects and that type of stuff. As we look ahead to 2023, these are things that we see coming, council priorities that we have seen. These are, these are stuff we're going to have to address as we go forward. Of course, funding a market, employee market compensation is important. Trying to put a dollar to that is not as simple as, well, our payroll's this, so 1% is that. If it was that simple, our payroll is approximately $50 million a year, so 1% would be 500,000. So if you need, you need 5% CPI, which is about what the CPI is this year, you know, that's two and a half million. It's not quite that simple because there's issues with turn, employee turnover and other things, temporary salaries, which aren't part of the paying compensation and that. But, you know, that is some rough numbers for you as we look at that. And again, like I say, CPI is coming in, it came in right at five compared to what it was last year. Again, we, just as a quick side note here, I pulled up a slide that wasn't in the packet I handed out, apologize, but we use the Phoenix area CPI index. And again, our CPI last year was 2%, which is exactly what the annual adjustment was. The annual adjustment for '21 is 5%. So with that, let me pop back here. Airport capital needs, obviously, the airport has a lot of projects and everybody's excited about the airport. What was submitted last year, the city share of all those projects ends up being like 3.7 million. And again, that's great, it's millions and millions of dollars more than that, but we still got to come up with 3.7 million out of the general fund, which struggles against our other needs, whether it's recreation, public safety, or library. The general fund fund balance, we've talked about, there isn't a huge unassigned. Fortunately, revenues are coming in strong, which will help cushion that deficit there. Deferred vehicle replacement, we talked a lot about this in last budget year, and we funded quite a bit of it last budget year, but it's not a one-year type of problem. It took us five, six years to get into this problem through the recession. And the other thing is we weren't able to fix, excuse me, or replace vehicles. Preliminary estimates from the FARB, less the two vehicles that you guys agreed to pay out of the ARPA funding, is still 5.5 million for next year. That doesn't all come out of the general fund, it comes out of all of our funds, but we will have to address it as we go forward. Legislative attacks on city revenues, what, what can I say? They're always fun. Last year, again, they, a few years ago, they decided to charge us operating fees for Department of Revenue. Well, to, we were paying a share of Department of Revenue's operating costs. Last year, they said, okay, you don't have to pay that anymore, we're going to convert that to the firefighter health cancer program, the workers' comp cancer program. You don't pay Department of Revenue anymore, you just pay 120-some-thousand to the cancer thing. Right now, they're saying, well, Department of Revenue needs a new computer and you should pay a share of that. So they're looking at reinstating about 50,000 a year in that. And again, that's kind of how it goes. It's something that we constantly struggle with, 34% of our general fund, 14.4 million. These were legislatively approved, the voter-approved shares of revenue done back in the 70s. So each time they chip away at them, they're chipping away at what the voters approved. So we always have to be diligent with the, with the league on that. The SLFRF, the ARPA funds, the continued allocation of those, I have a slide following this to get into some more detail there. Public safety expansion needs, we've talked about what does public safety need? More officers, does, would we need another fire station? Hard to put a number on this. They are submitting budget requests and proposals now, so we'll see what they say. I mean, you can put rough numbers on it. You know, the operating budget for the fire department's 11.4 million, that's five stations. If you want another station, it's probably 20% of that. So that's another two and a quarter million a year out of the general fund. So you can put rough numbers and it is significant. But it's something we will address, we'll look at and find a balancing point and a growth path on how we get from where we are to where we want to be on those things. New city hall improvements, again, cost coming in higher than expected, $4 million. We'll have to come up with that. Again, that's not going to be totally the general fund, but it's going to be primarily the general fund. It'll also be our other operating funds that will operate out of that facility. And of course, open space, 6.6. What we need to supplement for the remaining that council has put a letter in 10 out on, and that could come from the streets fund, the available fund balance from when it was both. But again, you spend it there, you aren't going to be able to repave girly or whatever, you know, you can only spend money once. I know you all realize that, but it's worth saying again and again. With that, this is the SLFRF that council director has to go forward with, three projects, which we are working on. As things do, things change, and I try to keep these things up to date. So this has even changed since I gave council their slides. The fire truck, we were saying 75 foot, apparently it's supposed to be 110 foot, so it grew. The budget, as of today, I got a call that preliminary estimates are putting that number not at 1.5, but probably at 1.7. So I reflected that there. That's, and the mobile command center, I haven't gotten any updates, so it's still at 400,000. So we still have 3,740 to allocate as we look at all these needs and all these impacts as we get through the budget process. So let's talk about the budget process. The exciting items in red are the public items. We're there at the top with today's budget retreat and kind of a heads up on things. Department of Mission personnel requests, capital grant request, capital needs and all that will be done by the departments over the next couple of months. We'll come back in May with a council workshop where we will lay out a balanced and methodical approach to all the needs for council's review and comment. Then tentative budget goes to council in June for the hearings and the publications and public comment. And then property taxes are set in July. With that, that is your 30-minute mid-year budget report. If you'd like any more detail or any questions, I'd be glad to get into them.
I think we had most of our questions answered as we went through that process. So thank you very much. Clearly looks to me like our city continues to be substantially and economically strong. The fact that we can entertain a lot of these expanded capital improvement projects, expanding airport operations and facilities, working on roads and being able to contemplate some of, some of the necessary vehicle acquisitions and things like that, it's just a strong reflection on our economic activity. So it's a pleasure to know you're keeping a very close eye on it, Mark.
Excuse me, council. Can you take a question from the public, please?
In a moment. Mayor Protam Rusing.
Oh, I'd just like to expound on that and it, and say it looks like we're going to be able to keep the lights on for another year.
I suppose we can entertain public comment.
Councilman, Mr. Mayor. My name is Gregory Adamson. I'm a lawyer in Chino Valley, Arizona. I'm a civil rights lawyer, a civil rights activist, constitutional lawyer. I'm not a bar attorney. It's my understanding that property taxes are unlawful unless those taxes are waged against property that's owned by a government entity. Am I correct? Who can answer that? No volunteers.
We're not allowed to comment unless it's an agendized item.
I didn't have time to agendize it. Would you like me to come back and agendize it first? Because I can.
I think your comments are more related to a call to the public rather than this particular discussion on our city budget.
Okay, may there be a better venue for this question?
Well, at 3 o'clock, we will have a call to the public, so.
Okay, I don't know that I'll be available then, but I'll check with your people and we'll see when I might be able to do that.
We have a call to the public at each, beginning of each voting session of the city council starts at 3 o'clock.
3 o'clock, okay. Thank you very much, appreciate your service. All right. How big did you?
All right then, if there are no additional comments or questions, then the. All right, then, if there are no additional comments or questions, then the study session is adjourned.